The Village of Hinsdale Board Trustees Meeting for Thursday, February 1, 2024. Please stand and say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes of January 23rd, 2024. Could I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2024 meeting.
Second. Any changes? Hearing none, roll call vote.
trustee Pashima?
Aye.
trustee Braden? trustee Siffler?
Abstain.
trustee Fisher?
Aye.
trustee Burns?
Aye.
trustee Benke?
And president Colley?
Aye.
That takes us to President's Report. Early voting for the 2024 general primary election will take place March 4 through March 18. The DuPage County, DuPage County residents can go to the Memorial Building Rotunda just out in the hallway there, there will be, which is an early voting site. Early voting hours will be from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on weekdays and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. For a complete list of locations for early voting, please visit the DuPage County Election Commission's website, or for those residents that live in Cook County, the Cook County Clerk's election website. The Chinese New Year, also known as the Spring Festival, is celebrated as the Lunar New Year. The Multicultural Spring Festival Celebration Committee has planned three events to take place in February, on February 10, February 18, and February 25. Those events was featured games, food, talent shows, and other activities. More information will be found on the village website. The Parks and Recreation Department's Quarks and Forks Event will be Friday, February 16th, at the Lodge in Catherine Leggy Memorial Park. Participants will learn the basics of wine and food pairing, tasting nine unique wines chosen by Hinsdale Wine Academy, paired with six tapas-style food courses. Registration for the event is on the village website. Citizens' petitions, anybody here to petition to the board on any matter, honor off the agenda?
Yes.
Yep. Do you state your name and your address?
Up here?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Isla Mush Talk. I'm at 923 South Vine Street, and I'm a junior at Hinsdale Central. I'm here because I want to advocate for the adoption of the Vision Zero program to promote traffic safety within Hinsdale. The Vision Zero Network is basically a program that strives to eliminate all fatalities and severe injuries resulting from vehicle collisions. Hinsdale has a very good track record of traffic safety, but there is still room for improvement. According to data from the police department, within the past five years, there have been over 100 collisions at Ogden and York, over 100 at Ogden and Kingery, over 50 at Madison and 55th, and almost 75 at County Line and 55th. While the majority of these only caused property damage, there have still, there have been injuries and fatalities, and the risk of a measurable loss of life due to preventable collisions is a risk we should not take. The Vision Zero Network offers a comprehensive framework for reimagining our streets and prioritizing safety above all else. It represents a commitment to designing streets to be forgiving of human error, implementing proven safety measures, and fostering a culture of shared responsibility among all road users. Beyond infrastructure, adopting Vision Zero would encourage Hinsdale to further invest in education and outreach programs to promote safe driving, walking, and biking habits. The bipartisan infrastructure law established the Safe Streets and Roads for All discretionary program with $5 billion in appropriated funds over five years, from 2022 to 2026. The Safe Streets and Roads for All program funds regional, local, and tribal initiatives through grants to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. Over $3 billion are still available for future funding rounds, which we could access potentially to help resources program. Vision Zero has seen tremendous success in Europe and rapid adoption by New York, Boston, and Chicago, amongst many other major cities. But it's not just big cities. Places like West Hartford, Connecticut, and Hoboken, New Jersey have also adopted the program. These areas have realized that prioritizing safe systems that take human error into account is an investment in the long-term health and vitality of their communities. We must continue to hold ourselves accountable for the choices we make behind the wheel and their impact on others. To this end, adopting Vision Zero would send a powerful message that we refuse to accept vehicle collisions as inevitable consequences of modern life. Thank you for your time.
So is there a website or something the staff can go on to get more information?
Yes, if you look up Vision Zero Network, the first link should be their website, and if you, there's a section at the top where you can access more information, and there are a lot of like lists of like frequently asked questions and more information and steps that villagers can take to embrace the program.
Great, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have no first reads, we only have consent agenda items. Who had the accounts payable?
I have the accounts payable. Everything looked great and in order, so I would move to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of January 18th, 2024, through January 24th, 2024, in the aggregate amount of $389,409.2 as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second. Roll call vote.
trustee Pashima?
Aye.
trustee Braden? trustee Siffler?
Aye.
trustee Fisher?
Aye.
trustee Burns?
Aye.
trustee Benke?
So we have four consent agenda items, seven C through F, unless somebody wants to pull one of those items off to talk about, could I have a motion of respect to items seven C through seven, I'm sorry, seven B through seven F?
Yeah, move to approve consent agenda items seven B through seven F.
Second.
Roll call vote.
trustee Pashima?
Aye.
trustee Braden? trustee Siffler?
Aye.
trustee Fisher?
Aye.
trustee Burns?
Aye.
trustee Benke?
No second reads, and that takes us to discussion items. Tonight we have the tollway that's going to come and talk to us about work that's going to begin, I think it's next spring. As residents may know, that more work is being done on the Western Springs side than on our side of the tollway, but that's about to change in the spring. Under the, the IGA, we, the intergovernmental agreement we signed with the tollway many years ago, the thought with the sound walls was that the new sound walls would go up first, and then the sound walls that are existing would be taken down after the new sound walls goes up. That was what the IGA talks about. And of course, the IGA was developed largely by lawyers and staff members, and it was before the tollway was designed. Now that the tollway has been designed, in a lot of areas, that is unworkable. It's just, there's just not enough room to build a new sound wall, having, and then take down the old sound wall afterwards. So, we've been working with the tollway, and they're going to go into it in more detail, but for most of the, the length of Hinsdale along the tollway, where they, well, they'll take down the, the old sound wall before they put up the new one, they're going to put a solid eight-foot screen fence for most of the area. All along the perimeter is going to be some kind of structure, solid structure, that, that screens the tollway from the residential homes and the parks. Most of that area will be solid fence, some, some small areas will be chain link fence. And I think around the Harding detention area, nothing will change. And that will, the temporary fencing, the solid fence will be up for six months or longer until they get the new wall put up. So some areas will be six months, some areas will be longer. But, you know, this is the only workable solution. We've been working with the tollway in a collaborative fashion, and they're here to talk about it tonight. And the tollway plans to have three meetings with residents in the areas, three different segments of, of the tollway, and, and talk to those residents about, you know, the screening that, that impacts their particular neighborhood. So, we can talk about this generally, if the trustees have questions in particular, we can, we can talk about those, but there's going to be a more detailed discussion with the residents about their particular property, what they see out their front door, or their back door, or across the street. So, with that.
Okay, well, good evening, President Colley, and members of the village board. I'd like to thank you for providing me the opportunity to give you an update on the Central Tri-State project. My name is Jeff Allen, I am a deputy chief of program implementation in the tollway engineering department. I am joined here this evening with my colleague Jill Ziegler, she's a senior project manager in our planning department, and also John Sandler with Trans Systems, who is our owners' representative. The tollway has committed $4 billion to reconstruct the Central Tri-State from Bell Morale to 95th Street, to improve the roadway, provide congestion relief, meet future transportation needs, and address regional mobility. The corridor is part of the tollway's 16-year, $15 billion move Illinois capital program, for which we are in our 13th year currently. Recent noticeable accomplishments along the corridor include the on-time completion of reconstruction widening from 95th Street all the way to I-55, as well as the work along the northbound side of I-294, from I-55 to Cermak, that we just constructed last year. As of now, we have successfully completed about 70% of the corridor construction. We have actively collaborated with the Village of Hinsdale since the initial planning stages, and we appreciate the village's input on our project. We have successfully completed the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad project adjacent to VEC and Pierce Parks, which did result in the creation of additional park space that's now utilized by the village. We've also done the relocation of the pedestrian bridge that connected Hinsdale and Western Springs, that's now been relocated down by 47th Street, where we've also been able to improve ADA accessibility and access to neighboring parks, as well as walking paths. And then the improvements at Ogden Avenue interchange to improve traffic flow and access, and then the completion of advanced utility relocation work. So by completing these projects in advance, I just want to stress that that helps to minimize the impacts to the community by the subsequent construction of like the mainline pavement. So, we've broken out what we can, we've done it in advance, and that allows us to complete, the bigger project was the pavement and the noise walls in, in a shorter timeframe. In 2023, our focus was reconstructing the northbound side between 55 and Cermak. We successfully executed the shift of northbound traffic onto the new pavement right before Christmas time. And on the western side, adjacent to the Village of Hinsdale, we've been working on advanced activities that included soil investigations, in order to confirm the underlying soil conditions, and to confirm our designs, and then also to mitigate against any potential delays that would come about from unknown conditions, so. And those, those conditions could ultimately impact the construction of the work that's being performed this year, and, and, and impact the schedule. So, we believe that this proactive approach ensures that we are well-prepared to address any challenges that might come up, and enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the overall construction process. So this year's work will include replacing the existing noise walls with new noise walls along the west side of the tollway, adjacent to the village. Our goal is to complete this work as quickly as possible, and we have emphasized that with our contractor. We are pleased to report that we were able to successfully complete the installation of noise walls in advance near Pierce Park, to avoid impacts to the local Little League baseball season. In areas where we are unable to construct noise walls in advance due to construction and access complexities, we've been working with the village to develop a plan that meets the intent of the intergovernmental agreement, which is to minimize impacts during construction to residents and those using the adjacent parks. And that plan, as President Colley mentioned, includes installing a solid fencing to screen properties, including residential, that are in close proximity to the tollway. Once the temporary fencing is installed, we anticipate completing a shift of the southbound traffic to the east, which will open up a work zone along the west side of the tollway. This will allow the contractor to access the work zone from the tollway side with their equipment and materials, and significantly reduce the need to utilize local roads or Village of Hinsdale streets for any construction activities. Any remaining work necessitating access through the village will be coordinated in advance, aligning with our established practice over the past several years. Upon completion of this traffic shift and securing the work zone, we plan to initiate the removal of pavement and noise walls, and this is expected to commence around mid-March, weather-dependent. Recognizing the importance of the noise walls to the village and its residents, I want to reiterate that our aim is to construct these new walls as quickly as possible. The construction duration will vary in its contingent upon factors, such as the completion of underground storm sewer and detention, construction of retaining walls, whether the noise wall type is a ground-mounted or a structure-mounted type. And these newly-designed noise walls adhere to or surpass Federal Highway Administration guidelines. We have also taken the extra step of making an additional investment by increasing the height of the new walls by two feet, where feasible, above and beyond what is required by the FHWA. Additionally, the height of the new noise walls will be equal to or greater than the current walls, and this emphasizes our commitment to meeting and exceeding the established standards. As construction progresses on the southbound side, in the coming months, we recognize the significance of ongoing communication with the residents. Meetings and resident groups adjacent to the work zone are currently being scheduled to explain the construction process and the upcoming schedule. We recognize the importance of timely progress, and we will make every effort to adhere to the proposed schedule, and keeping the impact on the community in mind. Additionally, we will continue to provide regular updates and maintain open lines of communication to ensure transparency throughout the construction process. The tollway and I personally appreciate the ongoing coordination with the village. We understand the challenges and disruptions associated with a project this large. We are committed to working together to ensure a successful outcome for all, and as the tollway strives to be a good neighbor, we respect the concerns of the community and remain dedicated to minimizing disruptions to the village and its residents, while understanding that it is a major reconstruction project. I'd also like to thank Kathleen, Andre, and George for working collaboratively with us over the past several months and years, and we hope to continue that effort. And maybe a further explanation about the noise wall types, just so we understand President Colley intro about why they can't be built in advance. There are several areas where in our efforts to minimize right-of-way acquisition, the alignment of the noise walls are pretty much in the same place, and then also there's areas where we're building retaining walls, where the noise walls get mounted to the structure. So we have to build that from the ground up. There's earthwork, there's storm sewer that's underneath that, then you build a retaining wall, then you build a structure on top of that, and unfortunately, the noise walls like the last thing to go up. So, there's a little bit of extra time involved in that, but there was an offsetting benefit to that by the reduction of right-of-way acquisition. So we think it's a fair thing, and like I said, we've been collaborating with village staff to identify areas where we can provide additional screening and, and, and access control, so.
And, and the other thing we, we talked about is, one of the reasons we're doing it this way is to try to keep as much of the construction equipment on the tollway side and not access the village, right?
Right.
So, taking down the old sound wall, putting up the fence, putting up a new sound wall enables you to do almost all the work, if not all the work, from the tollway side, right? And so we, we talked about that, and we decided it was our belief, we did not want the tollway construction equipment in the village. We'd rather have it from that side.
I don't know if any of you had the chance to see what was happening on the other side of the street with the construction of those noise walls, but this is large equipment, drill rigs that are drilling shafts, you know, 30, 40 feet into the ground, concrete trucks having to come in and fill those up with concrete, while steel posts are being set by cranes, and then the noise wall panels are all precast concrete. Those come in on flatbed trucks, again, are erected with a crane.
Right.
So it's very large equipment that has to perform this work, and it's in our both, you know, best interest to not have to go through the village to, in order to do that.
And the one thing I've learned as village president with roads is that heavy equipment are not friends of roads. Heavy equipment ruins residential streets, so that's, that's a big concern. I mean, once you start bringing these heavy equipment into the village and our streets, we're probably going to have to replace those streets, so I'd rather have not, not have. And so this is the, I think this is the only alternative we have.
Yeah, that would create additional noise, dust, all that concerns.
Yep. Any questions for me?
Yeah, Jeff, do the new noise walls, are they basically the same as the old noise walls, or do they have any improved attenuation characteristics?
They do. They are, you know, prefabricated, casted, you know, casted a producer off-site. They are a little bit thicker, I believe, than the previous walls. They do have enhanced aesthetics with a form liner finish on them, that, you know, it's not necessarily dissipating sound, but for aesthetics, it's a little bit better. But yes, they are an improvement over the current walls that are out there.
So, I mean, they'll be quieter?
They should be quieter, yes.
Okay, and you just said they were two feet higher, or not necessarily?
When they could be. So they're, what we did was we analyzed that according to the FHA policies to determine what the height is that's required, and then we went above and beyond that and just arbitrarily added two feet to that calculation per se.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
But you said there'll be same height or higher than the existing walls?
Correct, correct.
When are the existing noise walls going to come down? Did you say March?
Mid-March is what we're anticipating right now. We do need to shift traffic on the southbound side further east to open up a work zone where the contractor get, can get his equipment in there, and definitely nothing will be done before the sight screen fence is installed, which is ongoing right now. So there's a little bit of time associated with that.
And, and the existing noise walls are approximately how tall?
I would say around 18 feet, roughly.
It varies, because there's, so they, they do vary, but I'd say about 18.
And then I know it's dependent upon construction, but how long do you expect it to be that the temporary fencing will be up?
So we've outlined that on a handout that we provided you, and there's also a large road plot in the back, a rough schedule of what we're anticipating when they come down, and then when the news, new noise walls would be constructed. The big variable there is the structure-mounted type, where it takes a significant longer amount of time to develop the underlying structure, meaning the retaining wall, the storm sewer, and infrastructure that supports the wall. So it really depends on which type. There's some types that are ground-mounted, that, you know, can potentially be done by fall, you know, from spring to fall. You know, we are committed to getting these things done as quickly as possible. Our original goal was to, you know, try to get these done in one construction season where possible, but some of these structure types will take a little bit longer, but...
As you look from 55th Street to 47th Street, what percentage are going to be, you know, ground-mounted, where they're not going to be on top of a concrete infrastructure? Is it 30%, 80%?
I'd say every bit of 50 to 60% ground-mounted.
For the ground mounted, probably about, over 50%.
Over 50% of the ground mounted?
Yeah.
That's, that's the, the blue. The section that's structure-mounted is in Park, sorry, you're going to say, um, structure, the section that's structure-mounted will be basically through the, you know, Brook Park. The, the, the ground is the red, and the structure-mounted is the blue?
Yeah, Jeff, do you want to just explain the legend?
Yep. So, yeah, blue is structure-mounted noise wall, so that's, that's the easy one, and...
Basically, Brook Park.
Yep. So this is, yeah, Brook Park, that whole section is structure-mounted. I guess the good thing there is that it's adjacent to a park, but that is going to take a little bit longer.
Yeah.
If you get north of 47th, we get into a stretch up along Mill Street, that's structure-mounted, but, yeah, so it's probably about 50/50 throughout the entire stretch up to Ogden.
So, and during the time that the temporary fence will be up, it's a, it's a wood structure, and it's eight feet tall?
In some areas, where we've coordinated with the village staff to identify those areas. The other areas will be chain link fence, which is eight feet tall with a sight screening material on it, that'll be maintained. So it's still solid per se, it's just a different material.
For the, for the summer months, when everyone's going to be outside and worried about the noise, what is the decibel level difference at a reasonable point, call it 100 or 200 feet away from the wall, between the existing wall and the eight-foot wooden fence? It doesn't have to be exact, approximate.
I don't know if I have that really depending, and I don't, we don't have the exact, to be able to calculate that.
Is it twice as loud, three times as loud?
Not being a sound expert, I don't know.
We can provide you with some guidelines on that.
Walk me through your decision process, only to go eight feet high on the temporary, when the existing is 18 feet tall.
It's really because of a temporary condition and materials that are available to provide the access and screening. We're really trying to, we're not really trying to provide noise dissipation as opposed to access control and sight screening, because it's a temporary...
Also, isn't there, there won't be as much traffic on the road, right? I mean, the road will be shut down on the, on those lanes that have bought Hinsdale for...
So the southbound traffic will be shifted all the way into the middle when we're, right, when we're in earnest. So it'll be significant distance from where it is now.
Right.
Yes, there'll be construction equipment, but that is a linear operation, where we're not always in the same spot at the same time, the whole time. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, limitations on materials for not having a taller wall? Why, why are we only going eight, eight feet versus what currently is 18 feet? I'm going to need to answer that to residents in the area.
Yeah, I get it, because it's a temporary situation.
We talked about it, I mean, you can get fences in eight feet, I think it's difficult to get fences that are higher than eight feet, and it's a temporary thing, it's only going to be for the construction season. I mean, to get 18-foot wooden fences, I, I don't, I think you'd have to special order those, I don't think you can pick them up.
I don't even know they're available.
Available.
Eight foot was actually a little bit of a stretch. Six foot is standard for wood fence?
Right, so it was, it was all we could get for a temporary.
And stack them on top of each other?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have a big problem with a lot of residents in the area on this. You'd mentioned the intent of the IGA. It wasn't the intent, we had that to the letter, that the sound walls were going to be, new sound walls were going to go up before the old ones were taken down. We're going to have to, we're going to have to, we're going to have to report to our constituents why that's not the case.
Yeah, but, the point is, is in some places, if you look at the map, the new sound walls go within, almost in the same footprint as the old sound wall, so it's, it would be physically impossible. We didn't, and this wasn't designed at the point we did the IGA, and that, that was the intent, you know, and I, I think, I mean, it's, I, it would be, I, I think I'd feel much different about this if it wasn't a temporary situation.
Yeah, my, my concern, though, is a temporary situation that starts in March.
Yeah.
You know, right when everybody's outside. It's, I don't think this would be a big deal if it started in October, you know, but I know we can't control that.
What are the hours of construction?
Typically, the noise walls will be built during daytime hours.
But hours of construction on the highways? Were you asking about the wall of construction, or the...
Or just construction in general?
Well, whatever works being done while the walls are down.
So the majority of construction will be built during daytime hours. We've created a work zone to allow for that, and shifted the traffic and staged it, so that we can work during the day. There will be some nighttime activities that are just a natural part of construction, and one example would be, after we pour concrete pavement, we need to go out and saw cut joints. That typically has to happen while the concrete is still green, as we call it, and that's typically done at night. There will be some other activities, maybe with overhead trusses, or things that require a lane closure in order to erect them.
The stage changes themselves.
And the stage changes themselves, those always happen at night, because we need to reduce traffic down to one lane in order to do so.
Would there be any work to the walls being put up, or these structures being put in during the night hours?
We don't anticipate that. It's, it's not that there couldn't be, like, the erection of panels possibly overnight, but that's highly unlikely at this point.
So far on the west side, we have not erected any of the noise wall panels, or the, or the...
So far on the west side, we have not erected any of the noise wall panels or the posts at night.
You know, there's material deliveries such as concrete where typically the concrete plants aren't open at night, so that kind of prevents that also.
On the west, and I know it's different, but on the western spring side, when the fence originally came down until the new fence went up, how long was that? You mean, the sound wall? Time period, yes.
I'll call it a construction season, right? Basically, from spring to fall. There's, some areas get, I mean, again, this is a linear process. They don't all get constructed by the same crew or, you know, multiple crews at once.
But you would expect, if the old sound wall comes down this March, you'd expect the new sound wall to be completed by next March?
The longest duration that we anticipate within this section is a completion of structure-mounted noise walls in the spring of next year. There are some ground-mounted walls that will be done, let's call it fall for now. We're optimistic, you know, we can improve on that, but that's what we're anticipating right now.
And I'm assuming there's going to be Jersey barriers up before the wooden fence? From your construction area to where vehicles would be, there'll be Jersey's before?
Yeah, there will be a barrier wall on the, you know, shoulder of traffic that separates the work zone from our traffic. And then there'll be controlled construction access points that have flaggers, you know, bringing materials and letting trucks and equipment out.
And in general, where will the temporary wall be versus where the new wall would be? Is it going to, is the temporary wall going to be right where the new wall?
Temporary fencing?
Yes.
Pretty much along the right-of-way or easement line, which is, in the most cases, on the village side of where the existing wall is now.
But the wall, it's just to be clear that temporary fencing would be still on the tollway property or the easement.
Right. It's got to be, since you're taking out a wall and putting a wall in the same place, the fence can also be there. The fence has got to be further enough, and that's the whole point of this, right? You have to put it further enough west that you can build a new wall.
For the most part, it's on the property line, let's call it.
Yeah, right.
And I'm sorry I'm slow on this, I'm just thinking about questions that I'm going to get and I want to answer. But if there's no constru-, I understand with the structure-mounted, but where you're going down, and I'm assuming you go down with structural beams into the ground and put that up, if we're trying to avoid construction equipment on the west side of the wall, okay, I'm still not understanding why that can't go up now before construction starts. Is the noise wall supposed to be the furthest-most part of construction here on the, to the west side?
In some cases it is, yes. In some cases, the existing noise wall is on the tollway side of the proposed wall, so we literally can't get to where the proposed wall is unless we came through the village side, which we all felt was not a good idea.
Yeah, but you could take the existing wall down, go back ten or fifteen feet, however it is, and put the new wall up, because from what I understand, there's going to be nothing else on the west side of the wall. I understand with the structure-mounted that things are going to have to go in, but for things that are ground-mounted or have the steel poles going, I'm not...
No, you're correct. Yeah, the steps would be, for a ground-mounted wall, we're going to remove the existing wall, we're going to do grading and drainage work that's necessary, you know, on either side of the proposed wall, and then we'll construct the ground-mounted wall. And those will be done faster just because there's less work involved than what goes into a structure-mounted wall.
And will that be done before the construction of the road or after the construction of the road?
It could be done in advance of the pavement or about the same time. They'll be working on both. You know, the first operation is grading, you know, doing the earthwork and getting things to the proper grade, which not only includes the area where the noise wall is, but also the roadway itself. So they'll be going concurrently.
Demolitions will definitely be going concurrently through the area. In construction, we have to build from the bottom up, that's why we have to do the detention first.
Okay.
And then what we do in the work zone, the idea would be to build from the furthest extent from the right-of-way line back out towards the center. That's just the most efficient way.
When you have the residence meetings, can you come with data on noise? For example, if you're a hundred feet from the noise wall, two hundred feet and three hundred feet, what the current decibels are? And then, when the wall is down and an eight-foot wall is up, what the anticipated decibels will be? Because then I think residents will be able to understand, oh, it's only a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty percent of the current noise level versus if they have to get ready because, you know, a lot of people are going to have children right along the lines if they understand, hey, it's three hundred percent. That's a much different situation for them.
Yeah, I think we can provide that information.
Okay.
Yes.
But again, when you, when you start working on the west side, the traffic that would be nearest to you will be over what would have been three or four lanes from where it is now, right? It would be, so each lane is what, thirty feet? So you're talking about moving the traffic two hundred feet further to the east or...
No, it's about forty feet, I would say.
Forty feet east?
Approximately forty, maybe fifty, between forty and fifty feet to the, further to the east.
Right, and that's got to have some...
That'll have an impact.
You can take that into account.
Should definitely help. Essentially, we're putting in the traffic where the old median wall was. That was our pre-stage work. We took out the median wall.
And I'm not, I'm not an engineer or professional on this. Is that the right question to be asking that we can, you know, because residents are going to ask me, how much louder is it going to be? And I want to be able to... And also, to me, the traffic, the sound of traffic is a function of how fast the cars are moving. My experience on the tollway is it's gridlocked, so you could hear, you could hear, you know, a penny drop because it's just, nothing's moving. So I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, I think that when you get cars whizzing by, it's, the speed limit is when you get the most noise. Right now, the way I have it configured, it's not moving very fast, so, you know, I don't know, maybe the decibel things make sense, but I think there's just so many variables as to what decibel levels would be. The speed of traffic, the proximity of traffic to houses, that I, you know, I just don't think, I personally don't think that noise is going to be a big issue with that construction going through there.
The, for the, obviously, we've been working on the central tri-state now for a number of years on mainline construction. I could say that, you know, the noise complaints from the roadway have not been, have not been met. It's been the noise complaints from buildings, the structures, being the driving of the piles or breaking of the bridge structures with the jackhammers and large breakers has been the primary issues that we've had related to noise. Again, this is primarily going to be during the day of the work, so there isn't going to be any of that that's going to go overnight in ways of noise, but we've had very few, just up and down the corridor, traffic noise complaints.
I think that goes to the point that, I'm sure even with the existing noise walls, you can hear traffic to some degree, right?
Absolutely.
And when we move traffic over and it's only going twenty miles an hour because it's gridlocked, like you said, to a work zone.
Yeah.
It doesn't create as much noise, and it's probably a balance. It's probably a wash at that point. We did not receive a lot of complaints that I'm aware of when we were working on the northbound side, so we're hoping that's still the case here, so.
Should be.
Okay. Yep. When are you anticipating having these meetings with residents?
I believe the first one is scheduled for next Thursday.
Thursday, and then we have a several travel.
Yeah, so through the month of February.
And are you doing these as three like meetings, or are you breaking them down so that they're at different points for residents along the highway?
Different blocks of residents, yeah.
Meetings are going to be here?
I think we're having two at the library and two at the Adventist.
Adventist.
Yeah.
Anything else? And we did, we did talk about a taller fence, as you recall, and we just figured we couldn't find, that eight foot was about all you could get stock? Is that fair?
It's actually not even stock. It is even an eight-foot wood fence is a special order, so we had trouble getting that, and chain-link has a little bit more flexibility, but we were, you know, working with the commitment of trying to provide a solid screen.
Yeah.
We think this is definitely helping these areas.
And I also think that, and I'm not a sound engineer, but I would think that a higher wooden fence would not have all that much of an impact on sound. I'm not, you know, I don't think it would. I mean, wooden fence is a wooden fence. I think it's more to shield you from the roadway than to be a sound barrier, and I just don't think the sound is going to be that, that much of a problem. I could be wrong about that, but I just, I don't think it will be.
Yes, a question.
Sure.
Communication is key and appreciated, I'm sure, in this situation with all the residents. How are you going to provide the residents in all of these areas, you know, how are you keeping them up to date with this timeline?
With these meetings.
Aside from that, for example, you know, I apologize for the inconvenience, we're going to have three nights of evening construction going on. How are you going to keep them informed? So, you know, we're not fielding phone calls, people aren't getting mad, it's more, again, we apologize for this, here's the reason why, your wall's coming soon, just letting them know what your timeline is.
We have a communications team, both internally with the Tollway and also with our owners' representative team, that attends our progress meetings, identifies activities that could create noises that, you know, people should be aware of, and then we'll send out resident letters to them to notify them of the activities and the duration of those activities and what to expect.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, we've been doing that up and down the entire corridor, and so this will be no different, so.
So these will go, these will go to residents along the far eastern side of Hinsdale? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, yeah, adjacent to the tollway, yep.
They have all the addresses and names?
Yeah, yep.
So to add to that, we also have a twenty-four-hour hotline that residents can call, that there would be a live person that would answer twenty-four hours a day to be able to at least take that message, and then our communications team would get back to them as quickly as possible if any issues...
And where can they find that hotline number?
The hotline number is posted on the CTS website. The hotline number is six-three-zero-two-four-six-two-nine-three-zero. We will also put flyers, or actually attach a sign to the access controls button at certain points with that number also that you'd be able to...
Can we put the number on the village website, too?
What's the CTS website?
The tollway tri-state...
Central tri-state.
Central tri-state.
Right, right. What is the website? What is, what's the web address?
GetIPs.
What's that?
GetIPs.
Oh, okay, it's just the regular tollway.
Yeah, but we'll put all that information on the village website under tollway construction and have the hotline and the email or internet address, right.
As the tollway makes notifications available to us, we post them on the website, just so you know. So there should be dual notice. What's on the tollway site should be on our site, but it's just subject to us receiving the information.
No, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
Keep us informed.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to, do you have anything for the hundred fiftieth? Nope. Any staff reports? Trustee comments? Have a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
Back it.
Vote, call, vote.